Good afternoon. I'm Sean O'Brien. I'm the Kingston Town Moderator. I'm here with the Town Administrator Keith Hickey.
Hey Sean, how are you?
Good. How are you doing today?
Doing well, thanks.
And we're here today to preview the special town meeting, which is on November 16th at 7:00 PM at the Kingston Collection. It'll also be live on Comcast on Channel 15, Verizon on Channel 42, and at packtv.org forward slash live. So do you think we could do a little preview of what to anticipate at the special town meeting?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay, and there's a, on the warrant, there seems to be 20 articles. I'd like to go through them, but before we get there, unfortunately, we're gonna have the town meeting at the Kingston Collection again.
Sure.
We wanted to do it at the school. We understand the challenges of sound and the limitations that that creates at the Kingston Collection, but for a variety of reasons, the Board of Selectmen has decided to put it at the Kingston Collection. And hopefully, this will be the last time it's there.
Yeah, we said that in the spring, and unfortunately with COVID and some of the concerns for the kids, you know, masks needed to be worn at the schools. The state has mandated that and extended that mandate past the 16th, so you know, rather than have an issue with the masks and having people be uncomfortable wearing those in some cases, the Kingston Collection site was chosen primarily because masks don't need to be worn if you have been vaccinated. We'll have seats, you know, four to six feet apart, kinda like they were this past spring. So hopefully, people will come and be a little bit more comfortable. And there are, I know we've talked about this in the past, there are hearing devices there for people who may not be able to hear very well, which has been a pretty consistent complaint. We've continued to try to improve the ability to hear when you're in the audience, but if you still have an issue, there are some devices there that will help those who really need some additional help be able to hear what's going on, and hope people take advantage of those.
And the reason behind it not being at the school is they'd have to follow the DESI protocols, meaning everyone would have to be masked all the time, and that could create a variety of issues having the meeting there, so that was the underlying reason.
And that's really the, yeah, that's the main reason. We just want people to be comfortable and not get into a situation where people feel as though they're, they've been vaccinated and there's really no need to wear masks. Where we were gonna be visiting the school, it's the school's rules, the school's following DESI, which means having to wear masks at all times for everybody, and rather than have that situation come up and cause any sort of hardship for people, we, the board decided at that point just to have it at the Kingston Collection, so if people wanna wear masks, they certainly can, and if they choose not to because they're vaccinated, they have that right as well.
And we'll have the closed caption there again as well, too, correct?
We will.
Okay.
Yep.
So the, we have, the warrant has 20 articles. Would you like to go through those articles with me right now?
Sure.
So the first one, Article 1, is a motion by the Waterfront Committee, and it was voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. It was favorable 4-0 by the Finance Committee and 4 to 1 by the Board of Selectmen. And what are we trying to accomplish with Article 1?
So the Waterfront Committee right now does not have an alternate on their board. What they've asked for with this article is to allow the Board of Selectmen to appoint an alternate member of the Waterfront Committee, so if a regular member is away or unable to attend a meeting, the alternate can step in and have a full board. And it's also an opportunity for the alternate, they wanna come to meetings when there is a full board, to get themselves a little more acclimated to what's going on at the Waterfront Committee meetings, so when an opportunity does arrive for a regular member, they've had an alternate there who's played a bit of a regular role there, and will be up to speed and be able to participate and contribute quicker than somebody who's never sat at a Waterfront Committee board.
Okay. And Article number 2 is a motion by the Board of Selectmen, and that is the town appropriate $6,180.65 for paying outstanding bills from various town departments from the previous fiscal year?
Yeah, so unfortunately for us, you know, each year if, when we close our books, and a bill comes in from a prior fiscal year, in this case fiscal '21, we've gotta go back to town meeting and seek town meeting approval to pay those prior year bills before we're able to do so. Initially, excuse me, the warrant article was for $6,100. We had some employee benefit, human resource-related bills that were thought to be encumbered and paid in July that actually weren't. So the amount, we're gonna be asking for an amendment to the article to move it from $6,100 to almost $73,000, $72,792.19. Those are all prior year bills. They would be coming from free cash or funded through free cash, so a little bit of a mix-up. Unfortunately, we thought they had been carried forward, those funds had been carried forward for the additional amount needed, but they weren't, so we have to request those to be amended in the warrant article.
And the additional 60-plus thousands from what?
Free cash.
What prior, yeah, bills?
So they were primarily from employee benefits, a variety of them. There's seven prior year bills, most of which, 60 of the $70,000 was unemployment assistance that we thought we had processed for the month of June that hadn't been processed and are being processed now through a prior year bill request.
And was that voted on, the amended motion by the Board of Selectmen, or?
It wasn't yet because we weren't aware, so we left the article just the way it is. It's $6,100, and we'll ask the board to make a motion to amend it from $6,000 to $72,000, and hope the Finance Committee will support that, and we'll get those additional bills paid as well on the 16th.
Okay. Moving on to Article number 3, closed prior year unexpected warrant articles to free cash. Looks like it's, a lot of it's from 2017, '18, and '19, along with a little bit from '20, totaling $27,475.76.
Yeah, so there were warrant articles approved in the years you mentioned. The money has been spent, the amount of money needed in those articles have been spent, and we're seeking just to close those out and close that, to increase our free cash amount by the $27,000 number at the bottom of the warrant article.
And that was voted on and favorable to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee? No one opposed it. Article number 4 is the request to sell property, Maple Street, the old fire station.
So there's a, the old fire station has been in place, is kind of a cold storage building now for the town for the better part of 20-plus years. It's less than an acre of property, really can't be redeveloped the way it is because of its size. The challenge the town has, or the concern I've had, and why I brought it forward to the Board of Selectmen for some discussion, was the site itself has ground contamination that will cost a significant amount of money to fix, or to mitigate, I should say. Because the town was at least responsible for some of that contamination, there are no state or federal funds to use to clean that contamination up. So the town would need to fund those remediation needs. As I mentioned, it'd be exceptionally expensive, and again, it just is as candid as you can be, there's a property owner who butts the property on all sides of the road on Maple Street that's interested in building an over-55 facility. They don't need the town property to do that. I think they'd like to buy it, so that frankly, eyesore is no longer there. They're willing to take on the potential responsibility of cleaning it up. We have to go out to bid and sell to the high bidder, but again, I think it's only fair to be very clear to people that I'm not really sure who else would want to bid on the property, considering its size and the limitation of being able to redevelop it because of that size. But probably more importantly, the fact that you're gonna have to remediate that site and spend a significant amount of money to clean up the contamination in the soils.
And without that property being sold, this proposed over-55, that could still be done, correct?
Absolutely. That's what we've seen, you know, we've seen some preliminary drawings of the property, and it absolutely can be done without this property. I think they would like to see it, so it doesn't, they don't have what's there now at their front door, and for the town, it eliminates a huge liability that we'd have to deal with at some point in the future by cleaning up that mitigation, so.
And that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen 5-0, Finance Committee 4-0. Moving on to Article number 5, that is the fund the Fraternal Order of Police Large Contract. Just seems like there's a contract that needs to be funded?
Really, that's all it is. I mean, this is the last of the three contracts that have been approved in the last couple town meetings. This is a three-year contract for the Police Supervisors Union. The terms are comparable to what they were for the other four town unions. We're asking for funding for both fiscal '21 and fiscal '22, and if, we're hoping that the voters will be supportive of that, so we can get their group under contract like all the other town employees.
Okay, and if this doesn't pass, what happens with the contracts?
Well, we'll have to go back to the negotiating table and continue to negotiate, and try to come up with some other terms, or you know, it could go to, you know, mediation and, you know, which, what we're trying to do. We believe that we've negotiated in good faith, as has the union, to come to terms that were consistent, like I said, with other unions. So we're looking to really just treat the police supervisors very similarly to how we're treating all the other unions. If it doesn't, it's just gonna prolong the discussions. Ultimately, we're gonna have to come to terms in some way, and we would hope that the voters would be supportive.
And is there additional cost to mediation? Whether town council's involved or anything along those lines?
Town council, we, you know, we pay, we pay our town council a flat fee on a monthly basis, a retainer on a monthly basis for a variety of things, one of which does not include, you know, going to mediation on these employment contracts. So there'd be additional costs associated with having our council there. There'd be associated costs with having other professionals there to try to help both sides come to terms, so we really do think, I not speak for the board, but they vote unanimously, this seems to be a fair contract for both the Supervisors Union and the town, so we're, as I mentioned, hoping that everybody is supportive of that.
And that was favorable votes by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. No one opposed. And Article 6, is that similar with the firefighters' local 2337?
So the firefighters agreed a couple of years ago now to a two-year contract, and since that time, the board and the town have approved three-year collective bargaining agreements with the other unions. So what we're asking for, and what the unions agreed to, is to extend the two-year firefighter contract to a third year, with basically the same terms. There were some minor adjustments for the tenants, but minimal. What that does for us frankly is it allows all the collective bargaining agreements to expire in the same year, so as we negotiate successor agreements with all the five unions, we're doing so at the same time, so we're able to negotiate and be on kind of a level playing field, as will the unions, while we're all trying to do those at the same time rather than, you know, one one year and four another. So we think it'd be beneficial to everybody to allow the firefighters' contract to expire the same time everybody else's does.
And that was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, 5-0, and the Finance Committee, 4 to 0. Article number 7 is a supplemental to the 2022 operating budget. Why do we need this?
So the fire station one, Pembroke Station, the fire department noticed some damage on the inside of the building since May, since our annual town meeting. The building, at one point or another, was not properly finished on the outside and exposed, and materials that were there were exposed to weather when they shouldn't have been. That caused some rotting and some damage to the, to the, to some of the sheet rock and some of the plywood that's on the exterior of the building that has now since been covered by vinyl siding. This $44,000 that's being requested would allow the fire, the fire department damage to be repaired, so it doesn't worsen. With mold on a wood building, as I think everybody knows, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna continue to cause problems, so what we're trying to do with this is to fund the repairs to hopefully address any deficiencies, all of the deficiencies that are in the fire department building on Pembroke Street.
And that was voted on by the, what was it voted on? Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee were favorable votes for that project as well. Turning to Article number 8, additional funding for excesses reevaluation. Looks like $25,000.
So not quite sure what the history is here frankly, but when the revaluation was funded a couple of years ago, the revaluation should have been funded for $65,000. It was funded at $45,000. So the 20, the 20, I'm sorry, $40,000 instead of 65, I apologize, my math is off. The additional $25,000 would allow the town to hire a company to go out and check properties that had pulled building permits and had worked on those properties, so they can properly assess those properties for the improvements that have been made on the land, whether it be a new deck, a new house, swimming pool, garage, whatever it happens to be. That $25,000, we would contract with an outside company to go out and pick up all the new construction during the past assessing year.
Okay, and does that have to be done every year, or is that every couple of years? Do you know often that?
So, I mean, new construction, changes in property is supposed to be done every year. Revaluations for property are done every five. We're in the process of that now. They've, the state has found some inconsistencies in our assessing records, where some of the improvements on properties that are existing have not been recorded as such on the assessing records, and with this $25,000, we're looking to rectify that, to make sure that the assessing records are, have as much integrity with them as possible and are as accurate as they can be.
I hope my deck's recorded.
Me too.
And valid.
Hope you get a building permit.
Article 9 is docks at the town landing, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $49,500 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to expand for the purposes of purchase and installation of docks.
So the Waterfront Committee, I think, will probably take the lead on describing and discussing the need here. Basically, the docks at the town landing have met their useful life expectancy, need to be replaced and/or repaired. The funding here would do that. The money would come solely from the Waterways Fund, as it's intended to. As we collect mooring fees and things of that nature on an annual basis, those revenues are deposited into this waterway fund to allow for improvements and/or repairs to to that facility without costing the taxpayers any money. This is, in my mind, a housekeeping issue where if we wanna continue to offer docks for residents to use, we need to maintain those. This is, this would allow the Waterfront Committee to replace those docks and put something in that would not cause, it's just time to replace those docks, I guess I should say, simply, so. I'm sure Tyler Bouchard and others in the Waterfront Committee will get up and speak to this more eloquently than I have been able to do, but really, we're just looking to replace the docks that are there because they're at the end of their useful life.
And that was approved unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee.
Right.
And Article 10 is also at the landing of the boat, and that refers to the boat ramp, but instead, the $30,000 from that is coming from free cash.
It is, and the distinction that the Waterfront Committee made to both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee was with the docks themselves, only people who use the facility, the docks, pay for the moorings and whatnot to make the repairs on those assets. The boat ramp is a little bit different. Anybody can use the boat ramp, they don't have to have a mooring, they don't have to have a boat slip on the docks, things of that nature. Anybody from any community can use those, use that facility, so the thought was it's a town asset, and the town as a whole should be funding that asset. So they're seeking $30,000 from free cash that's been supported by the board and the Finance Committee to have the engineering work done, to make improvements to the boat ramp, which is going to include removing the asphalt that currently is what the boat ramp is constructed of, that asphalt is no longer able to be used in new construction, so you'll see more of a cement boat ramp at some point in the future. The Waterfront Committee will be coming back at a later town meeting date to fund the actual replacement of the boat ramp, the $30,000 is just the engineering.
Okay, and that was Board of Selectmen favorable, and the Finance Committee was 3 to 1 and favorable from the Capital Planning, 3 to 0. Does the Town Administrator get a slip?
He does not get a slip.
No?
I guess a big anchor if he wants one, but not a slip.
That'd be nice. Hurry, number, Article 11 is repairs to the Font School, $30,000 from free cash, and that's related to roof repair?
So there's been ongoing roof issues at the Font School for a number of years. They've, the facilities director has tried to use other funding sources or donations to make the repairs to the school. Those repairs, you know, they're worsening inside the school. It's a historic building, the town felt strongly enough to buy, in my mind, the $30,000 to replace the entire roof, to make it watertight, weatherproof, is something that we should be doing if we think we should own the building. This $30,000 would come from free cash and would re-roof the entire building.
Okay, and that was Board of Selectmen favorable. I don't have a Finance Committee vote yet, but Capital Planning was 3-0 on that as well, too. Turning to Article number 12, amend existing senior citizen property tax exemption.
So I think for, if we could, 12, 13, and 14 really all are interrelated. Back in 2001, the town of Kingston voters approved allowing exemption for an elderly exemption, which allowed for elderly people within a certain age bracket to receive a property tax exemption if their income was lower than whatever was identified in the warrant article. That was, that received approval back in 2001 and has been administered and applied to those who are eligible for that since that time. What the Assessing Department discovered over the last few months is that certain sections of the state law that should have been adopted to allow for income and exemption amounts that would be used to determine eligibility, to increase those exemption and income amounts by the annual cost of living, was not approved. So the town mistakenly has been modifying the income amount and the exemption amount that we're giving for elderly property owners who are eligible. The income amounts and the exemption amounts have increased without the authority to do so. Articles 12, 13, and 14 will, are being brought forward to close that loophole that should have been picked up in 2001 and wasn't, so that property owners who are eligible for this exemption will be able to see increases in the amount that they make, in the exemption amount that they are provided by the annual cost of living moving forward from here. I will, I wanna be as clear as I can, I guess, to make sure that people understand, because there were no, there was not, this wasn't granted as part of the original legislation back in 2001, the income limits and the exemption limits will have to start back at ground zero, meaning that the amounts that have been, the income and exemption amounts that have increased over the last 20 or so years will not be allowed to be used moving forward. We'll have to go back to the threshold, the benchmark amounts for all of those. So what that means is there may be people who have seen the exemption or have been eligible for the exemption in the past, and I wanna say there's four or five of those that may not be eligible in the future, and the amount of the exemption that was, that has been granted in the past would drop as well, so I think it's, there's a couple of different amounts that will drop back to the amounts that were approved in 2001. So I've mentioned during a Board of Selectmen meeting that, you know, I'm gonna try to do what I can to legally help those who have been harmed by the mistake the town made in 2001 and are losing some or all of their exemption, so they aren't harmed, and I'll work with legal counsel to find a way to try to have that happen. So it's an unfortunate mistake that we found, we wanna correct that mistake, and I think everybody, I know that I and the Assessing Department is standing up and saying, look, there was an error made, we gotta correct it, we understand there's some impact to this, but rather than just pretend that we didn't find it, we wanna bring it forward and fix it.
Okay, and that would adjust on its own going forward?
By the annual cost of living, there's a cost of living factor that the Assessing Department uses that's published, and I'm not sure which one it is, so they were, if it went up by 2.5%, then the income would go up by 2.5%, and the exemption to reduce your property tax bill would go up by the 2.5% as well, for example.
And that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for 12, 13, and 14, which covers everything you just recited for us, and it was all favorable votes, I believe? Yes?
Yes, it was.
5-0, 4-0. That takes us to Article 15, which is additional funding for Water Department operating budget of, looks like $75,000?
So the Water Department borrowed short-term for a water project, and the treasurer and the water commissioners did not believe at that, at the spring town meeting, they'd have the funds on hand to fund the balance of the project without having to do short-term borrowing. Since that time, they have received the funds they need to pay cash for the improvements and no longer need the million-plus dollars for, for the, I'm sorry, the 75, I'm sorry, jumping ahead. $75,000.
I moved you to 16 too fast. This is for the?
I apologize.
The pumps.
The pumps, so the Water Department wants to, I apologize, my bad. The Water Department wants to perform some maintenance on the pumps. They don't wanna wait until next spring to do so, they think it's important to do it over the next few months. They're asking $75,000 to come from the Water Department revenues to fund those repairs and maintenance items for the $75,000. I apologize for the confusion.
So is that just moving money, or is that an additional expense to the town?
That's an additional, that's an additional appropriation, additional expense to, for the Water Department that will be funded solely by water users through the water rates.
And that was voted on by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and unanimously approved. Now, this is one you've already started with.
Yeah, I apologize.
Article 16 is the Water Department's request to obtain eminent domain.
Yes. So the Water Department, if voters recall, back in May of 2021, the Water Department asked for and was approved, I think it was $150,000, to acquire a piece of property that abutted an existing wellfield, and since that time, the property owner of the wellfield, I'm sorry, of the private property next to the wellfield has passed away. And the water commissioners seem to have reached a, they haven't been able to find a compromise with the heirs of that particular property, so what they're asking for is they're asking for the authority to take the property they're interested in buying by eminent domain if they aren't able to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement with the current heirs of that property. It was discussed by both the board and the Finance Committee at length. The water commissioners will be at town meeting to explain why they feel justified going the eminent domain process if they need to, and again, I think they've made this very clear, and I wanna try to do the same, it's a last resort. They continue to try to hope to negotiate in good faith with the property owners. They continue to try to hope to negotiate in good faith with the property owners, but if they can't, they feel as though waiting an additional six months for a May town meeting with the amount of time it's going to take from property acquisition to well activation is something that they really don't want to wait and add another six months to. So they'd like to get the eminent domain approvals at town meeting this fall, have them in their back pocket if, in fact, they need to use them.
So it seems to me that there was kind of an agreement from the party who passed away to sell the property. They passed away, and the estate's looking for a little more time to decide on how they want to deal with things?
So I have been involved in the negotiations. From what the testimony was at the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee meeting was exactly that, that the Water Commissioners had some conversations with the property owner before they passed. The heirs have indicated to them, at least verbally, that, you know, they want to honor any agreements that the property owner had made before their passing, but they're working their way through the estate itself, and I think they were looking for a little bit more time. The Water Commissioners, I think, feel as though that they're being pressed a bit for time, and as I tried to mention, there's a need there for the water well to be started, the process and program to get this thing up and running, and they think that the additional six months of waiting until the next spring town meeting could potentially harm them down the road. So they'd like to try to at least have the authority to take it by eminent domain if it gets to that point, but they hope that it doesn't.
Okay. And the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, one member on each was in favor, and the four of each department was opposed to this. Turning to Article 17, is additional funding for wastewater department to pay off short-term debt.
Yeah, this was the one I jumped to earlier, so I apologize for that. The wastewater department is in the process of making some upgrades. They anticipated not having those funds available as part of the fiscal '22 budget and needed to borrow on a short-term basis to fund the project. Revenues actually came in quicker than they expected, so rather than borrow on a short-term basis and have interest accrue in the project, they'd like to increase their appropriation by the $1.6 million and use the sewer funds to pay that debt off, basically, and pay cash for the project. So that's what they're doing here.
Okay. So it seems they've received a lot more income faster than they thought it was going to come in?
Correct.
In sewage space.
Yep.
They just want to close it to save the interest?
Exactly.
And that was voted on and is favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Article 18 is the purchase of the property on Winthrop Street. Did I skip 17? No, we're good.
Yep.
This is the green ribbons.
Yes, it is.
I thought that was for support of the moderator, but apparently...
Well, I can understand the confusion there, there's no question.
So what's going on with this?
Well, I think everybody's probably, anybody who's been watching social media or reading the newspapers or watching Board of Selectment meetings over the last couple of years has had a little taste of the Winthrop Street property. The Winthrop Street property was in conservation for a number of years, and the owners wanted to take it out of conservation to potentially develop it into some sort of housing development. Because it was in a conservation designation where they paid a fraction of the taxes they would have paid normally, they have to offer this property to the town for the right of first refusal. I think the town and specifically a lot of the neighbors who live up in the area were concerned about what type of development might go on up there if it were to be developed, and have been working now for the better part of a couple of years to fundraise and find ways to acquire the Winthrop Street property, which is about 46 acres, by using, by either town funds or some other grant purposes. Through their hard work, they've been able to obtain a state grant for $400,000 and also received an approval from the Community Preservation Commission and their funding for the entire $805,000. They'll only need to use 405 of that for the purchase because the state grant was for $400,000. But, so basically, this Warren article will authorize the town to purchase that 46-acre piece of property, and that property will remain in an undeveloped state for eternity.
Now, do you know, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, do you know if the developer ever came before the Board of Selectmen and explained what he or she wanted to do with the property or anything along those lines?
Sure. So the developer, at one point, six to eight months ago, was offered to come in front of the Board of Selectmen and outline what they were proposing to do on the property so the board could at least have a sense of what they were walking away from, so to speak, if they did get the approval for a subdivision. The developers or property owners at the time chose not to come. So the offer was extended, and I can't speak to what the developers' reasonings were for not presenting to the board, but they chose not to. So there's been very little discussion amongst the current property owners and/or the developer and the town with regards to what was going to be constructed up there.
And do you know if there'll be, I don't live in the Winthrop Street area, do you know if there'll be access for parking if someone wanted to go to the property or if there's any?
Sure. That's a great question, and one of the concerns was that as the property exists today, it's landlocked, meaning you'd have to trespass over some other private piece of property to get to this 46 acres. As part of the efforts of the Winthrop Street neighborhood, one of the neighbors who has frontage on Winthrop Street and also has frontage on this 46-acre track has agreed to allow for an easement across their land for access to the Winthrop Street property. I would expect, and one of the contingencies with the Community Preservation Fund vote was that that property owner had to deed that easement to the town before the property could be purchased. So there will be access to the 46 acres. There will be an expense, I assume, of some kind in the future potentially for a parking lot on the Winthrop Street property, but there will be legal access to that property through an easement that's been recorded to registry to access that property moving forward.
And you said there'd be an additional 400 and somewhat thousand paid to by another fund. Does that increase taxes, or is that money already available?
So there's a state grant that was applied for and received, which is great. The original, the cost of the property was $800,000. That was the property purchase and sale from the developer who wanted to move forward. So that's the benchmark we had to meet as a town. The Community Preservation Commission appropriated or approved $805,000. The additional $5,000 for legal fees, recording fees, things of that nature. Since the Community Preservation Commission voted the $805,000, the state has awarded the grant for $400,000. So the amount of money that will come from the Community Preservation Funds will be $405,000. The state grant will fund the balance. The $405,000 that comes from the Community Preservation Funds is a surcharge, so to speak, on everybody's property taxes that was approved a number of years ago to be placed in the custody of the Community Preservation Commission to acquire property for three purposes: open space, community housing, or some sort of a historic purpose. So this obviously is, they're using this for open space, which is obviously allowable, and so it is collected through property taxes. It's collected on an annual basis. So it's money that's been accruing now for a few years. The town and other agencies can apply for a Community Preservation Commission funding through an application process. It's all done publicly. That's what the Winthrop Street group did, and they were fortunate enough to get this grant. So kudos to them for the efforts they made.
And that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Community Preservation Committee, and it was all favorable.
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to Article 19, that is amend the general bylaws, Chapter 4, Article 8, Capital Planning Committee bylaw. And what are we trying to accomplish with this one?
So the Capital Planning Committee will make a presentation. They have taken the time and made the effort to update the Capital Planning bylaw that's been in place now for quite some time. What they've really done is two things: update the timelines to what is currently being used for timelines, but I think more importantly, they're increasing the threshold of what a capital purchase is from $10,000 to $25,000, which I think is, you know, is a reasonable adjustment based on the fact it's been 20-ish years since that $10,000 threshold was established. So, you know, they'll be there to explain that, but the biggest issue is, the biggest change, I guess I should say, is the $10,000 to $25,000 threshold.
And this was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five zero, but the Finance Committee was close. It was three to two. Do you know what the?
There was some concern on the Finance Committee about, obviously, anything between $10,000 and $24,999 would no longer be in capital. There was some concern from the Finance Committee, you know, that may not be quite as much oversight on that area amount of spending, which I understand and appreciate. Those funds would need to be included now in the annual operating budget of the town rather than the Capital article. And again, I can, we won't have the Capital Planning Committee reviewing those requests, but I feel pretty confident in saying that the funding request will still be reviewed and considered as carefully as they would have been through the Capital Planning Committee.
Okay. And we have a citizens petition for Article 20, to amend town bylaws, Chapter 4, town officers, boards, and committees.
So this is a citizens petition that would mandate that all boards and commissions provide at every one of their meetings remote participation. With the pandemic that's gone on over the last couple of years, obviously, everybody's become accustomed to not having to come to the townhouse if that's where the meeting was going to be held, and participate, you know, via their computer or their phone remotely. And some boards and commissions have continued that, some haven't. We've had a citizens petition that would require every board and commission that's appointed to allow for public participation in a remote manner. So what we've tried to do to provide the voters some information is, we currently have the ability now in one of our smaller meeting rooms, in room 203, where some of the smaller boards and commissions meet, and they have their meetings via Zoom or GoToMeeting or what have you with a single camera and some microphones. We would replicate that in the small meeting room downstairs, so you'd have, these boards and commissions would come to the townhouse and have their meetings in either room 101 or 203. The equipment would be the same to try to make it as easy as possible for those who would be responsible for setting the, you know, setting the meeting up and making sure it goes live in a remote manner and allowing it to go. I mean, I understand the philosophy behind it, and I agree with it. The challenge we have, frankly, is it's going to limit the, we're going to have a lot of, a lot of boards and commissions who may not meet here now have to meet here, and the challenge of just making sure that those boards and commissions have the, remember how to, you know, turn on the equipment, turn off the equipment, and operate that on a regular basis. There's been some challenges with the boards that do that now. That'll be exacerbated, I think, a little bit moving forward. Nothing's insurmountable, but the, I think the idea the petitioners had was to make government more open, and I think that's, they'll speak to that on the 16th.
Would that create scheduling conflicts as well? I mean...
Well, perhaps. I mean, certainly, there's a number of, I think there's going to be scheduling conflicts, but I think there's also a number of boards and commissions who, you know, meet at locations like the Reed Community Center or the sewer plant or the water plant that are now going to have to come here. So how that, you know, what type of challenges that has scheduling-wise is kind of yet to be seen, but I think it is going to be a bit of a challenge at times. The meeting rooms are pretty busy most nights, and there'll be an additional demand for that.
And do we have to preserve these meeting videos and audios for a period of time?
We do.
You put some costs together. Is that just the cost of setting up the cameras?
Yeah, so what we did was, you know, the PAC TV group was kind enough to make some upgrades to the meeting room on the second floor, room 203, the small meeting room. Those improvements for the cameras and microphones and all that type of stuff was about five grand. So it cost us about $5,000 to outfit room 101 downstairs, and then, you know, the cost of maintaining the records and some secondary costs as well. But, so it's not, again, it's not cost prohibitive. It'll be a challenge, I think, to make sure all of the meetings are being televised as they should be and being allowed to be participated in the way they should be without, you know, technical issues coming in the way.
And that was not voted on because it was a citizen petition, correct?
Right. The FinCom and the Board of Selectmen don't vote on citizen petitions, so there is no vote.
Is there potentially another location you could, the town could set up?
One spot I was, that I've kicked around a little bit, frankly, because I think it would be a better setup than some of these smaller meeting rooms. Because the property is so underutilized, there's the old library in front of the Reed. It's a beautiful building. I think it would be, you could leave a setup there most of the time of, you know, a board table and some seats in the audience rather than everybody sitting around a large conference table and having, sometimes having some difficulties hearing and seeing what's going on. So that's a possibility, you know, whether there's some space in schools and how we deal with that, you know, is another issue. But again, it's, you know, every time, every place we put one of these meeting setups, it's, you know, five, six grand anyways to get that set up, so.
What else you got? Anything new in the town you want to share?
You know, we're still plugging away, honestly, on trying to get that wind turbine torn down. So that's still kind of plugging away. There's a lot going on. Hopefully, a lot of it, I guess in my mind, it seems pretty good. If people have concerns, you know, again, we wish, I wish that they'd reach out and let me know, and we'll try to deal with those concerns to the best of our ability. But overall, you know, I think hopefully the town meeting is just some real housekeeping issues for the most part, with probably the biggest issue certainly being Winthrop Street and a lot of opinions about that. So, you know, hopefully people are happy with the way things are moving.
It seems like opinions are one way or the other on that already. Minds are made up.
I agree.
We do need a quorum of 100 people.
No question.
To have a town meeting.
I think you'll get that.
Without that, we're not going to have it. So come on down. It's November 16, 7:00 PM at the Kingston Collection.
One last thing I would like to say, if I don't mean, I apologize for interrupting. I know the Board of Health is going to try potentially to have a vaccination clinic at the same time in another room of the Kingston Collection. So if people are interested in coming to town meeting and want to stop by either before or after, or after they've voted on whatever important article they have, they can potentially shoot down the hall or across the way and get their vaccination for COVID and come back in and participate in town meeting, so.
Unless the quorum's too close, they should stay the whole time.
Absolutely.
Well, that's very nice for the Board of Health to put that together. But thanks for joining me here today and...
Appreciate your time.
Hopefully, we have an efficient town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.